We'll come to order in just a moment when our stenographer has finished setting up. Okay, welcome. We're on the record. I call case 17E 0459 and case 17G 0460 proceeding on motion of the Commission as to the rates, charges, rules, and regulations of Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corporation for electric service and for gas service. My name is Erica Bergen, with me is Michelle Phillips. We're administrative law judges with the Department of Public Service, and we are assigned to this case. We are here today to listen to your comments and summarize and report your comments to the Commissioners, the Public Service Commission. If you do not wish to speak publicly today, I'll let you know that you can go to the Commission's website, www.dps.ny.gov. You can search using one of the case numbers I said, 17E 0459, 17G 0460, and you can submit your comments online. There's instructions for this on the fact sheet that Andrew has at the table to my right. These public statement hearings were announced by the Commission and a notice issued on September 11th, and were again publicized by the Commission in its September 26 press release. For the purposes of the public statement hearing, I've asked you to fill out a speaker card. Using your speaker cards, I will call you to speak in the order in which they were submitted. Your statement will be transcribed by our stenographer, and they will be made part of the official record of these cases. So please, when you come up to speak, use the microphone at the podium, speak clearly, state your name, and for the sake of others, we have quite a few speakers here today, so let's see, about 10. So let's try to be brief, although take as much time as you like, but if you have very lengthy statements, please try to summarize them. You can always submit your comments online as well on the website. If you have an electronic device with you, please silence them now for the courtesy for your speakers. Are there any questions? Ma'am? Yes, her question was about online comments. Andrew at this table to my right has a fact sheet about the case, and on the fact sheet will be the website, www.dps.ny.gov, and it will tell you step-by-step instructions as to how to submit comments for the official case record. Okay? Yes? Sure. Yes. This is actually just a public statement. The question was if I can have you repeat the question that was asked of you, but this is not a question-and-answer session, this is just an opportunity for the public to come up and to make a statement on the record, so they won't be taking questions or providing any back and forth. No, the audience is not here to ask questions of the speakers, these are members of the public, so they won't be taking your questions. Okay? Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, so I'll begin by calling the first speaker, Peace. She represents the community.
Hello, call me Peace. It's amazing how our journey has brought us all here together, and I'm very concerned about the situation with Central Hudson. What's $1 or maybe $4? Well, it's a lot. And can we really afford a $36 million training center? Maybe we can, but it costs money, and a lot of people are just caring about money-making. This fixed charge of $1 to $4 may happen or may not happen, but if it does happen, we'll be affected financially in our pockets. We have to help and not hurt our pockets. We have to help people and bring community back in the focus and center of Central Hudson, and I'm sure that's what they're trying to do, but there are other options. There are families represented here today, communities, and you need to listen to us. These fixed charges are not conducive for some people, and for other people, it's fine. So we need to find another way. And I don't know about you, but I think we need to focus on the upper class and the higher class. Now, Central Hudson doesn't know what's in your bank account when they send out the bill, but what they could do, and what I propose, is a scholarship. This scholarship will be offered to high-income families especially, to help out the masses of the low-income families. The rich could provide this scholarship, and if you need someone to write a letter, Peace will write the letter. Just include it in the bill. It will be a scholarship for low-income families, and higher-income families could pay 50 to 75, to even up to $500 extra if they have it, and this could happen. It could revolutionize the whole Central Hudson system, and I think it's time that the rich start helping out, because look at Puerto Rico, and look at Florida, Mexico. You know, we need to realize that pocketbook that we're holding so tight needs to be opened, and perhaps in the scholarship, we could mention if you are a higher-income family, please give, and realize that you're impacting America. Let's revolutionize America. The city of dreams is the city of Kingston to me, and Central Hudson, I love you and all that you do, but write that little letter in your bill for a scholarship. Let me see how I close here. That's my proposal, that's my thoughts, and may you carry my words in your heart.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lori Wheelock.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Wheelock. I'm Assembly Member Kevin Cahill's Legislative Director and Counsel. The Assembly Member is actually on his way back to Kingston now and is hoping to make it for the 7:00 PM hearing, but just in case he asks me to come today and kind of discuss a little bit of the history of his work with Central Hudson over the years. We are actively reviewing the rate application. The Assembly Member met with Central Hudson a few weeks back, and we've been hearing from constituents, and we encourage people to continue to reach out to our office to share their opinions as well. So for those of you who have already, thank you, and please keep them coming. As we review the application, the Assembly Member is currently writing a letter that will be sent to the Chair of the Public Service Commission, Honorable John B. Rhodes, and in that letter, we'll be looking at each point that justifies the rate application increase and raising questions, asking for more information, and often rejecting the justification. I'll be looking a little bit at the history, but again, the Assembly Member will hopefully be here tonight. If for some reason he's unable to make it, we will be advertising that letter publicly once it's submitted, and we'll be sharing it with our constituents. So while objectable, the application for dramatic and unaffordable increase from Central Hudson is not unexpected. Back in 2012, Central Hudson asked the Public Service Commission to do an acquisition with Fortis, a Canadian-based company. The Assembly Member back then cautioned the Public Service Commission to pay special attention to the impact this specific transaction would have on customers within Central Hudson's footprint. He demanded inclusion of strict accountability measures if the acquisition was to be approved. He also asked for additional public comment hearings, which were granted by the Public Service Commission and he appreciated. After hundreds of comments were submitted, there was a deal that was struck in 2013 that included $50 million in customer benefits spread out between three counties and a one-year rate freeze, which he appreciated. What followed, though, was significant rate increases. The most recent application was approved in 2015 for a three-year rate plan totaling over $43 million in electric charge increases and nearly $11 million in natural gas increases. What struck us the most was that the last phase of this three-year increase was just implemented on July 1st, 2017, and then the next rate application for this one-year increase was filed on July 28th, seven days later. Again, while the office is extensively reviewing the application, and the Assembly Member will be coming out with a specific letter that details some of our concerns, just a few of the many items that struck us, it's just first and foremost whether the community can afford another rate increase. We have calls every day from customers in the service territory who live in our district who are deeply concerned about whether or not they can afford their home heating costs and electric costs. Another area that was actually discussed earlier is the vegetation trimming plan for the one year. We saw there was $12.1 million, and just wanted to learn more about why that amount is so high over the one-year period, just also a little bit more about what is in the right-of-way and what's outside of the right-of-way, and again, just more information to justify that number, because again, upon first approval and review, it seems extremely high. Another area of deep concern is the equity ratio increase of 9% to 95.5%. We want to understand why that ask is being made, and again, at the end of the day, for the people who are struggling the most in our community, we want to know more information on this plan. In closing, the Assembly Member respectfully requests that supplemental information be submitted to the Public Service Commission and to him. He specifically wants to determine what costs are essential to maintaining service integrity and those that are implicit to the value of Central Hudson's stockholders. He rejects the proposal in full and asks for, if anything, a rollback to the current rates, and finally, he asks that the Public Service Commission work with Central Hudson on at least three additional public hearing dates to be held more in rural communities and other areas of the Central Hudson footprint, so that additional people can have the opportunity to share their opinions and thoughts. Again, the Assembly Member hopes to make it tonight. If not, we will be submitting the letter before the close date on October 20th, and thank you so much for having us here today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Evelyn Wright. Evelyn Wright?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for this opportunity to comment. My name is Evelyn Wright. I'm a resident of Kingston, a member of Citizens for Local Power, and by profession, I'm an energy economist. In this proposed rate plan, I'm particularly concerned that the fixed charge increases that have been proposed are moving in the wrong direction. Central Hudson's residential fixed charge is already the highest in the state, and New York State's fixed charges are, for the most part, higher than those in the region, in some cases several times higher than those in neighboring states. Why is this a problem? If you want people to be engaged in managing and ultimately reducing their energy consumption, as the REV is trying to do, you need to give them an incentive to do so. That is, you need to enable them to save money by paying attention to their consumption and making choices and investments that allow them to reduce their energy usage. When you make the fixed portion of their bill that they have no control over higher, and the variable portion, the portion that scales with their energy usage, lower, that reduces their incentive to save energy. It makes those investments and those choices that they make to save energy less meaningful, and ultimately, having cheaper energy incentivizes people to use more of it. So it's really contradicting the goals of the REV to make the fixed charges higher and the variable charges lower. In addition, it's really regressive, right? The portion of the bill that is fixed is borne by everybody. Lower-usage customers, which are usually lower-income customers, pay a higher portion of their bill in fixed charges, so the people who most need to control their bills and their usage are the least equipped to do so. So it's kind of contradictory to have an increase in the fixed portion of the bill and then say, okay, we're going to give some rebates to low-income customers. Much better to lower the fixed portion of their bill and give them more control over their savings, again, particularly as we try to engage people in the REV process. So I'm not sure what differs between New York State and other states in the region in terms of what's considered inclutable in fixed charges that would explain the real discrepancies between practices here and practices in other states. It would seem to me that the only charges that would belong as fixed charges would be the charges that are literally and directly related to maintaining customer accounts, maintaining customer records, meter reading, and so on. I think that's consistent with long-established utility ratemaking practices, and so I would urge the Commission and the Department to take a look at those practices for establishing the fixed charges. I know that utilities around the country right now are asking for increases in their fixed charges. Understandably, they want to have certainty over what their revenues are going to be. I think there are other approaches to ratemaking that can give them that certainty without weakening the incentives to save energy. So if the Commission is serious about the REV goals for customer engagement, I think the Commission needs to not only reject the fixed charge increases, but really look at directing Central Hudson to start moving towards reducing those fixed charges and variabilizing as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles Landy. Charles Landy.
Thank you for the privilege of the floor. My name is Charlie Landy, and I reside at 20 Almont Street in the City of Kingston. I spent 18 years in these council chambers as an alderman from the 3rd Ward. So I spent some time going through the internet and Central Hudson's website and the Public Service Commission's website, and I found some very interesting questions, and I come with questions. One of them is, why is it that of the six utilities in New York State that is Consolidated Edison, New York State Electric and Gas, Orange and Rockland, Rochester Electric and Gas, and only Central Hudson and Niagara Mohawk have pending rate cases before them? What's up? You know, it's just a question. And why is it that Clearview Energy can produce and sell electricity at a fraction of Central Hudson's rates and be on Central Hudson's website as an alternative to buying energy from Central Hudson? One of the problems that I had with the presentation, Anthony, was that you presented a price per day as opposed to a price per kilowatt-hour, and so the comparison that I want to make is the price per kilowatt-hour. Central Hudson will sell you 650 kilowatts for $0.06426, which amounts to $44.71. But if you go down further on Central Hudson's webpage, you'll find that there's a company there by the name of Clearview Energy, and if you lock in to a fixed rate for X number of months, you can buy that same 650 kilowatts for $6.69. That's 15% of the price that Central Hudson calls for. Central Hudson's price is 84% higher than Clearview Energy. Now, if Clearview Energy can produce that electricity for that price, why can't Central Hudson? Just questions, that's all. The other thing is, I also did some studying on the Cost of Living Index and the Consumer Price Index, and it seems as though the interest or the price that Central Hudson is asking for seems to be out of sync with those two indexes, and it just struck me as being odd that these questions are questions that should be asked and answered. And I'm going to leave this with you so that somehow I can get some answers on these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kat Fisher.
Hi, I'm representing Sierra Club today. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission. So first, we'd like to applaud Central Hudson for the one-time rebate to welcome its increase in electric vehicle market and revenue, so we're really happy about that. But we do have a concern that if Central Hudson proposes, if this rate proposal should go through, that it will lead to an increase, as everyone else has said, in fixed charges to customers already the largest in the state and would set back our work to create a clean energy future, and should be rejected by the Commission. We're concerned about the timing of this increase and fee. It's essentially a fee when we're talking about adding to the cost of the size of service and adding disincentives at a time when electric vehicles are starting to see an uptake in the area. We had more than 500 people come out a month ago to learn more about electric cars at our National Drive Electric Week event, and a disincentive at this particular time when the market is starting to see a shift will be counterproductive. I also think that with all the incentives coming from the federal government and from our state through multiple programs, that we're really working at cross purposes here. Instead of increasing incentives, we're adding disincentives and fees. We also would recommend that an increase in workplace charging incentives with higher incentives for workplaces that offer renewable energy. These are the kinds of incentives and tiered incentives that we'd like to see that would really be true incentives for incentivizing renewable energy. About the time of use rate, so we'd like to see a smaller window in the time of use rate, as small as it could be, and also an increase in the savings. What we've heard from other people that have, from other utilities that have offered time of use rates that are so small that they're almost indiscernible and aren't really incentives after all, but we would like to see an increase in savings there, and we would like to see an effort to educate consumers about those time of use opportunities and the savings that can be had there. We also would appreciate the utility taking responsibility for providing separate meters so that we can offer a clear, separate meter to keep track of the electric vehicle charging differences. There's also a real issue here for making sure that the benefits of renewable energy, particularly with regard to electric vehicles, are shared by all parts of the community, so a lot of, the benefits of electric vehicles are the fact that they are cheaper to fuel, they're cheaper to maintain, and if all different parts of the community are going to be able to make use of those benefits, they have to remain cheaper to fuel. And for the folks that are getting used EVs that are coming off of lease, taking advantage of these very inexpensive cars, the very small upcharges do matter and will begin to disincentivize a purchase of a used EV. We also want to draw attention to what some of the other utilities are doing in the state. ConEd has a fantastic smart charge New York program that has a variety of discounts that add up, I think in six different ways per month. You can earn small incremental incentives for charging your electric vehicle at the right time and sharing the charging information back with the utility. They're also doing really profound and actually nationally-recognized EV expansion program with New York City, Downstate, to add lots of free charging all over the state. So while some utilities are actually making major steps and investments in electric vehicle charging equipment, we don't want to be the utility with high rates that is adding disincentives. Also on Long Island, PSE and G's upcoming commercial workplace charging program adds an 80% rebate. We would urge Central Hudson to look into that if you're not already aware. They have an 80% rebate of the cost of Level 2 charging equipment that adds a cap so that it can't exceed $4,000 per Level 2 charging equipment installation, and I can give you the details of that that I have here. But there are some other very creative approaches that actually do a lot to incentivize electric vehicle charging and give more control to the customer in terms of the kinds of discounts that can be had. So lastly, the Public Service Commission should require additional public hearings for this rate case. If the case proceeds to settlement, hearings should be held once a joint proposal has been negotiated among the parties to give the public the opportunity to weigh in on any changes to the proposed rate plan. This is particularly important since many types of customers, residents, many of whom work during the day and can't attend a meeting like this, small businesses, local governments, are not directly represented in these closed-door kinds of negotiations. So we would like to see the Public Service Commission proceed with caution and insist that these changes reflect incentives for people to choose a more efficient mode of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carl Chipman.
Thank you. My name is Carl Chipman. I am a party to this rate case. I represent the Ulster County Association of Town Supervisors and Village Mayors. I'm president of that organization. I also represent the family of Woodstock. I'm president of the Board of Directors, and I'm also the supervisor of the town of Rochester. This is a one-year rate increase plan. Precedent has been for three-year rate plans. This plan includes significant investment in infrastructure, technology, and human capital in the form of training and additional hiring. The problem with the one-year plan is it only shows the investment and not the returns and savings from the previously mentioned investments, which would be garnered after implementation in years 2, 3, 4, and onward. It is not reasonable just to show the cost of these investments without showing the anticipated savings from those investments. For example, there will be lower repair For example, there will be lower repair costs and less labor costs, especially overtime, as aging infrastructure is replaced and greater trimming is done around the lines. My suggestion would be to introduce a five-year plan and see if rate increase is necessary at all. We can be guaranteed that this one-year increase is approved. Central Hudson Electric and Gas will not be asking for a rate increase, a decrease, when it realizes savings from investments made. And unfortunately, I don't see a mechanism for us as consumers to receive a rate decrease as the system currently exists. Secondly, I liken the proposed increase in the fixed rate charge from $25, going up to $25, from $24, as rubbing salt on an open wound. Central Hudson already enjoys the highest rate in New York State and now wants to increase it even more. We, as consumers, have no control over this cost. You might even call this an equal-opportunity unfair charge, as someone who uses no electricity pays the same as one who is an energy hog. We should be eliminating or at least reducing this charge instead of increasing it. It makes absolutely no sense and what it does is it totally, it's like punishing people for not using. Three, this plan creates a new extra charge of $1 to $4 per month for residential consumers using more than 9,000 kilowatt hours per year. That's while the national average is 10,000, to reduce peak demand. This new service-size charge could have been a good idea if consumers were given the tools to move their usage off-peak and thus utilities could lower its cost for meeting peak capacity. Instead, this is just another revenue stream created for Central Hudson. Fourth, these rate increases can be likened to kicking somebody, someone when they're already down for the working poor and our seniors on low and fixed incomes. Although some will receive monthly bill discounts, many more will not, especially when we're tying it to HEEP and things like that. The current programs for those who make well below the state median household income serves only a fraction of those who need the help in the first place. Many of these people will fall through the safety net and find it even harder to choose between the roof over their heads, food in their stomachs, clothes on their backs, or lights and heat in their home. Fifth, this plan calls for allowing an increase in return of equity. I'd just like to call it profit from 9% to 9.5%. That's $4.1 million from our pockets to their shareholders. It must be great being a regulated monopoly where you can just ask your regulator to increase your profit. In the competitive world, you must earn it by producing better service as efficiently as possible. Please reject this increase. Six, this rate plan calls for building a $36 million Taj Mahal, or they'd like to call it a training center, to be built with an estimated operating cost of $1.6 million a year. As much as I believe in training and investing in people, I feel that this is going down the wrong path and that better outcomes could be obtained at far lower costs. A bloated bureaucracy will be created, which will cost consumers more than the returns we'll ever warrant. Within Central Hudson Electric and Gas service territory are several SUNY colleges in Bosie's with eager learners who could be the source of new employees that Central Hudson is forecasted to need to replace its retiring workforce. I believe it was stated up at the information meeting that about 85% of its employees will be retiring within the next few years. Working with these institutions where the brick and mortar is already there to create training programs would go a long ways towards reducing the cost of recruiting and training its labor force. I can honestly tell you that I was fortunate enough about 20 years ago to be part of a program with Bosie's in Ulster County. I was a dealership general manager at the time, and we found a problem with technicians. They used to call them mechanics, but today we call them technicians. Cars have computers and electronics like you wouldn't believe. And what we were doing at the time is we were stealing one technician from another dealership and basically paying big money for mediocrity with what we were getting. So what we decided to do was start a training program up at Bosie's. We had apprentices that were in high school come in and work in a couple of days a week in the dealership, learning while they were already going to school. Some of these kids ended up going to college. I hired a few of them. They had four-year degrees and they are now the current leaders in the automotive service industry. This could work for Central Hudson here. We spend $35,000 a year to send our kids, we pay Harvard cost to send our kids to high school. And you know what? They grow up, they don't have jobs, and they leave the area. Well, here's a way where we can do something, make that first step forward, instead of building a damn building for $36 million and paying $1.6 million a year to keep it. All you're doing is creating jobs for a lot of big shots there. That's it. To conclude, I ask that you please reject this rate proposal as presented and ask for Central Hudson Electric and Gas, Fortis, to go back to the drawing board with a more thoughtful, long-term approach. And I believe five years would be the way to go. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to give a voice to those I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Julie Noble.
Good afternoon. My name is Julie Noble and I am the Environmental Education and Sustainability Coordinator for the City of Kingston. City of Kingston Mayor Steve Noble is unable to be here today, so he asked me to deliver these comments on his behalf. First, the City of Kingston would like to thank the Public Service Commission for hosting this information session and public hearing, as public input is a critical component of the rate-setting process. I want to emphasize that it is imperative that any changes are made with the public interest as primary while supporting the critical energy system that we all depend on. As a community, this proposed rate plan has a direct impact on each sector of this Kingston community: residents, low-income customers, small businesses, large commercial and industrial customers, the full municipality. It is critical that these direct impacts do not unfairly burden this community with high bills and furthermore important, that any changes fully support a transition to a clean energy system. The City of Kingston is a bronze-certified climate-smart community. Further, we are a clean energy community, making the commitment, not just in resolutions and promises, but in action to make advances in our community towards a cleaner energy future. In 2012, the City of Kingston adopted Kingston's Climate Action Plan. In this, we set goals to reduce energy consumption, improve energy efficiency, and reduce energy-related costs. We set goals to support and promote the use of renewable forms of energy. We set goals to improve awareness of opportunities for energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emissions reductions. In 2010, in our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we determined that 59% of our community's energy consumption comes from the commercial and residential sectors, accounting for 58% of our greenhouse gas emissions. We have set goals for reducing these numbers by 20% by 2020. Buildings and facilities account for a significant portion of energy use. We are working hard to increase energy awareness through incentives, streamline permitting, and energy efficiency programming and education. As part of the REV initiative, the state aims to shift from a large-scale system of power generation to a more distributed energy system, employing clean energy, and the city is engaged in that reform both on a municipal and community level. We also understand the need for safe and reliable electric and gas service. Even for those of us who have chosen to go solar on our houses or fossil-fuel-free on our vehicles, we are still dependent on Central Hudson for delivery and reliable infrastructure. Thereby, any shift in rate plans requires great scrutiny on part of the local municipalities on behalf of their communities. This proposed rate plan increases Central Hudson's fixed charges for residential customers, which are already the highest in the state, as was mentioned, to $25 per month. This $25 would apply across the board regardless of energy efficiency and conservation measures and usage, inequitably applying increased fixed charges to the full residential sector. Further, volumetric rates above this fixed rate, the service-size charge, will impose additional monthly costs for many residents, adding a new charge during peak hours regardless of actual usage times. So for residents already making the effort to conserve in order to reduce their bills, this is an added undue burden. Increased fixed charges for small businesses also has ramifications for the business itself and the community, as even small rate changes for mom-and-pop shops have larger implications financially. The proposed rate plan is unlike past rate plans, as Carl mentioned, that have typically covered three-year periods. At a one-year rate, residents and businesses are unable to budget long-term, contributing to financial instability. The City of Kingston urges Central Hudson to modify the proposed plan to be consistent with past years and reflect a three-year period. As a city diverse in income and demographics, we strongly emphasize the importance of Central Hudson working with representatives of all incomes and demographics in our community and each community to understand the real needs of those who are being served. Finally, the City of Kingston, like Ulster County, has made a commitment towards shifting to a green fleet, transitioning our city fleet to rely less on fossil fuels while also accommodating residents and visitors alike in providing charging stations around the city. In order to really support a shift to a cleaner energy economy, Central Hudson should support the shift to clean vehicles by offering a discounted rate for electric vehicle charging, thus advancing the transition to clean vehicles and vehicle infrastructure. Again, I would like to thank the Public Service Commission for hosting this event and others throughout the region, and I encourage the PSC to host additional public hearings once any changes have been made to the current proposed rate plan. It is critical that this and any rate changes are done with the public interest in mind and also support the advancement of a clean energy economy for all. Thank you, Mayor Noble.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ron Leonard.
Thank you. Wanted to make my comments sort of outside the box on the issue of rate increases. Any better? So my comments are really in the form of an overview of why this increase, which is sort of a reverse compound interest if you think about it, is both unfair and unwise from the point of view of the Public Service Commission and the utility itself. If you look at this type of increase and look at it, say, every two years occurring, how long will it take before we double the cost of electricity? Not too long. That's an unwise way of running a business. When you look at some of the investments, as Carl mentioned, things like information technology modernization, well, that's an investment that certainly has a return on it and a return that would be good for increasing customer acceptance and also making your business more efficient. I think a lot of these rate increase justifications really don't justify the rationale behind them. And I wanted to finally go over the one caveat that I'd like to give both the commission and the utility, is that you mentioned this little thing about cost-benefit analysis. You know, if you take a cost-benefit analysis and look at burying all the lines, it just doesn't make sense. Well, what's occurring is that there are reasons that you have some problems in borrowing money, which is sort of astounding because when you look at it, the utility has probably the most ease of borrowing money from the banking industry. They have a rate base. They can bank on that rate base. They should have the cheapest borrowing rate in the world, except for this little string of things that happened recently, Barclays Bank Bond Rating Service. Now, this is a service that, you know, everybody goes out and goes into the bond market and gets their bonds rated, like we were mentioning it with that AA rating with utilities typically. Well, they just downgraded the entire U.S. electric industry sector bond market rating because the simple fact that ratepayers have an alternative. They have an alternative source of getting power. And I'm talking about the ESCOs on the bills that we mentioned before. They have the alternative of putting in a renewable energy system themselves or now, because of New York State's generosity, going towards community-shared solar and providing an alternative from a monopoly-based power system. Now, when that occurs, a guy that I like in New York State, his name is Richard Kaufman, sort of coined a phrase that describes what's happening to the utilities. In the case of utilities, he coined a phrase that sort of typifies what they are becoming. His phrase is zombie utilities. A zombie utility is an entity that's basically putting itself out of business. It's pissing off the rate payers. It's continually increasing its price for less quality of service. And at a certain point, people who have an alternative will vote with their feet. They will change. And, you know, when you do things like increase the service charge for providing and connecting yourself to the grid and, say, a person decides to put in a solar system and use net metering and finds themselves still being charged a fee on a monthly basis that seems outrageous to them, well, in two years, they can also put in a battery system and it will be cheaper to do that than continually connect to your grid. So it's a false economic premise to continue down this road and continue to burden ratepayers with arguably unjust charges and expect them to stand for it when they have an alternative right at their ready to turn to. So please, Commission, look at this in a critical manner and see what we're facing as a future. REV has been really put to task of changing the way we do things. And a fundamental change could be that we partner with the utilities and say to them, "Well, here's a community-based solar project, a community alternative to the traditional utility service. And if we decide that community-choice aggregation would be a good partnership, well, why not embrace that? Why not do something different rather than go down the same old road with rate increase upon rate increase upon rate increase with no really improvement in services or things that you're delivering to the customer, which is the commodity? And I think we can do better. I think we can work smarter, partner up."
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Conrad.
Good afternoon. I am a local portfolio manager for high-net-worth individuals and financial analyst. I specialize in income-producing companies, high-dividend companies, including utilities like Fortis, although that's not currently in my portfolio. I have a PhD in mathematics and I'm also a holder of the Financial Analyst Charter, which is relevant to my first comments on the requested increase in return of equity. I asked the question during the earlier information session about the justification for that return on equity and that justification being that it was needed in order to induce investors to provide the necessary capital for these investments. I did not find that at all credible. I looked at the Fortis stock chart this morning and it's been up, I'm afraid I don't remember, but well over 20% in the last year. And we're talking short-term. This is a one-year term rate increase. So current capital markets are saying that investors are begging to fund equity investments in Fortis. We don't need to give them an extra incentive. Looking at the stock market today, I could probably justify reducing their return on equity. If you, I did not look at their bond rating and the other part of the justification was that they needed to maintain a strong bond rating. However, they are also increasing an increased proportion of equity. And as you increase the equity cushion for a company, the bond rating goes up because the bond holders get the money back first. They're the highest in the capital stack. And so if there's more equity, which I think is fine if they need to maintain their bond rating, that problem is taken care of. So I simply don't find the request for an increase in return on equity to be at all credible. There's no reasonable There's no reasonable justification for it. In terms of the specific parts of the rate increase itself, I find that some parts of it do align the incentives that you're giving rateholders with the goals that the PSC has given to Central Hudson, which we want to support renewable energy, we want to increase energy efficiency, and we want to not put an undue burden on low-income users. I'd like to address each of those in turn. In terms of supporting renewable energy, the best way to increase the incentives for renewable energy are higher volumetric charges and reduced fixed charges, keeping the total rates appropriate for funding the company. So raising the fixed charge, it would be better to reduce it. In terms of supporting energy efficiency, again, the volumetric charge, the marginal cost, the larger that is per kilowatt-hour, the greater their incentive will be for energy efficiency. The larger the fixed charge is, the less the incentive, so it makes no sense to increase the fixed charge. We should be looking to reduce the fixed charge. In terms of supporting low-income users, the proposal to have an additional charge on high users actually does make sense. I would say actually be more radical about it than Central Hudson has proposed and introduced a increasing block rates. That is, for the first number of kilowatt-hours per month, you have a low-per-kilowatt-hour charge, and increase that in each increasing block, which is somewhat accomplished by the proposal that Central Hudson put forward. But this has the effect of putting low charges on those least able to pay for it, low-electricity users, and putting high charges on those who are most able and have the resources to reduce their energy use or invest in renewable energy. There was one point that, the one exception there, of course, is electric vehicles, as was brought up during the information session, but I do feel that the response about the availability of time-of-use rates does adequately address that concern. It also actually helps with low-income users, especially those who use electricity for heat, because a time-of-use rate is advantageous for them, because the heating load is, of course, highest at night, which is when you could also be charging your EV. So in that part, increasing the information availability about the time-of-use rate would be a great step in addition to having it available. Make sure the people who need it most, the low-income people who are on electric heat, have the best information about it, good information for electric vehicle users, people who might be considering electric vehicles. But I do feel that the time-of-use rate does adequately address that question, and especially if you put it in conjunction with increasing block rate charges, you would align your incentives with the goals of the REV. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Metzger.
I'm Jennifer Metzger, Director of Citizens for Local Power. I'm also a Rosendale Town Council member. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'll be submitting more detailed testimony next month as a party for CLP, but would like to offer a public statement. As Anthony had earlier mentioned, the state has been undertaking energy reforms called Reforming the Energy Vision, or REV, for the last three years. These reforms, among other things, are supposed to be giving people more control over their energy costs. The proposed rate plan will give us less control, worsening the energy burden for working families, people living on low and fixed incomes, and small businesses. Central Hudson, as a number of people have mentioned, has the highest fixed charges in the state and is now looking to increase them further. These charges are inequitable. Everyone pays the same, no matter how much electricity they use, and they are deprived of the ability to have greater control over their energy costs by using less. In neighboring Connecticut, utilities are moving in the right direction. Last year, one of the two investor-owned utilities reduced its fixed charges from over $17 a month to under $10 a month. Central Hudson's fixed residential charge is unreasonably high at $24 a month. That charge should be $10 or less. I know Central Hudson will disagree. The company often states that its costs are higher because it is a small utility and it covers a large geographic area. Central Hudson also says that its rate hikes are driven in part by declining revenues because it delivers less electricity as a result of people becoming more efficient and using more renewable energy. I'd like to make three points in response to those arguments. First, back in 2013, the company's rationale for being taken over by Fortis, a Canadian multinational, was supposedly to address this issue of the company's scale and its costs. A press release by Central Hudson at the time stated that the acquisition would bring, quote, "substantial long-term benefits owing to, quote, 'Fortis' strong credit rating, greater scale, and access to capital.'" We are now four years into Fortis' ownership of Central Hudson, and we ask, what are the promised benefits to customers? With the exception of a one-year rate freeze agreed to as part of the merger, rates have increased every year. As you know, Citizens for Local Power and the wider public and many public officials fought hard against that takeover. We would now like an accounting of the benefits outside of offsets from the proceeds of the sale, which are coming to an end. If the promised benefits haven't materialized, then Fortis should be held accountable. From what I can see in this proposed rate plan, it's about what we can give to Fortis shareholders and not the other way around. This includes a proposal that ratepayers subsidize the purchase of Fortis stock for executives and employees, and a proposed increase in the rate of return to shareholders, which ratepayers would also pay for. Second, if the company is worried about declining revenues from electricity delivery, there is a lot more that can be done to support the shift to electric vehicles and renewable heating and cooling, which will increase electricity use in a way that is much more beneficial to the climate and to customers than using gasoline and fracked heating oil. The company has proposed some incentives, which is great, but it can do much more in rate design and incentives. And I just want to mention, time-of-use rate has been brought up a few times. I'm now a fully-electric car owner, 100% electric, and we're an efficient household, and we would love to switch to the time-of-use rates, but they make no economic sense. We would pay more shifting to those rates than just staying on the usual rate. So the way they're currently structured, it's not just about the window of time, it's about, you know, how much you're penalized for using energy during the day versus how much you're rewarded for using it at night. We're going to be, actually, there were some great comments earlier about incentives and rate design, and we're going to be making some recommendations about that in our testimony. The point is that these are beneficial uses of electricity that are going to increase, and there is more than that the company can do to accelerate that trend, and it's really good for all of us and for the planet. Third and finally, there are a lot of proposed spending items in this rate plan that collectively are the major drivers of the rate hike, spending that can and should be trimmed down. But it's not just about whether Central Hudson's projections of expenses are too high, it's also about the priorities. The priorities should be to make energy more affordable, give customers greater control over their energy costs, and invest in making the local grid more resilient and supportive of local renewable resources. It's those kind of investments that are ultimately going to make our energy system cleaner, less costly, and more secure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Elizabeth Broad.